Good morning. Are we... True, yeah. Welcome to the Tipuna Korero meeting of the 25th of November 2021. We'll start now with apologies. We have an apology from Taku who's not here at the moment, he may come in later. Public forum... Oh. For that?
Move Taku's.
Oh, okay, yeah, I better move Taku's apology, even though it... All right, seconded, all those in favour? And public forum, we don't have any requests to speak this morning, although we have a list of speakers shortly. Are there any conflict of interest declarations, seeing as we've been schooled up on this quite recently? Yep, none, there being none, we'll move to notifications of extraordinary business, of which there are none, which now moves us to item five, which is confirmation of minutes of the Tipuna Korero meeting of 4th of November 2021. I'll move them to get them on the table, do I have a seconder please? Yep, so I've moved those as a true and correct record, are there any notes? Yes? No? I, I, councillor Waddell seconded it. Yeah. Caroline had already got it, you people are too slow. Yeah. What? Sorry, sorry. Thank you, I've been schooled by the mayor as well. As well as the rest of you. Right, shall we carry on? So I've moved it, no, nobody's got any comments, all right, I'll now put the motion, all those in favour? Those against, carried. So that now moves us to one of the major item on the agenda today, apologies to the other items. The review of the general bylaw part 16 of traffic hearings. I'm going to move this report, and do I have a seconder, councillor Ford? So we have now nineteen submitters who are going to zoom in. They've each got ten minutes, as we know, so do we have the first submitter? We don't. Well, I thought you're gonna ask me a question or tell me something. Sorry, carry on. Come on. Yeah. Oh, I've got mine in... I've got mine in paper, I don't have the... No. Maybe an officer can answer that question? No, we don't have the page numbers? You're right. Right. Beer copies for the mayor?
No, don't worry.
That's good. So we're just waiting on Danielle Campbell as first submitter. Yeah. Yeah, I think we'll adjourn until... I'd like to restart the meeting, please, so that's at, what is it, 8:36. Now, welcome Danielle, can you hear me? Or you're, you're on mute. Can you hear me now, do you wanna talk and see whether we can hear you?
Kia ora.
Well done, so just so you know, you have ten minutes, a bell will sound at eight minutes, so you can either keep talking or you can allow time for us to ask questions, but we'll keep strictly to that ten minutes, okay? All right, where you go, thank you.
Kia ora tato, kua Danielle Campbell toku enua, noa tairā fetihao, kua rōngmāi wahine rāwa kua nāti paro o kū iwi. Good morning ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and speak here today. My name is Danielle Campbell and as I said to you in my mahi, I am originally from Gisborne and am of rōngmāi wahine and nāti paro descent. I am a rate paying resident of Teatahi Bay and have been so for the last fifteen years and I'm here today in support of the submission that I have made regarding the transport by law and traffic management plan. More specifically, I'm here today to ask you not to allow cars onto the Teatahi Bay beach. I walk along that beach every day, in the mornings the beach is lovely, there is lots of other people that are there that are walking, walking their dogs, picking up rubbish, enjoying the peacefulness and serenity of that beach. As the day progresses however, and particularly in the evenings, the beach turns into something that resembles the North City car park. Unfortunately, it also resembles the North City car park if you are allowed to drink at it. It's not safe for children, there's a large number of vehicles that are parked on the beach and as I said before, there's a large number of people in those vehicles who are drinking and then driving along the beach or driving off the beach. Twice in the week before I made my submission, I was witness to some clowns on the beach driving around doing donuts while at great speed, while these small children building sandcastles only metres away from them. People sit in their cars, they drink, they play their music really loud, they drive all over the beach, they put the people, and generally the elderly people, walking their pets and small children at risk every time we allow a car on that beach. As I said earlier on, I'm from Gisborne and I don't know if you're familiar with the Gisborne region, but it's surrounded by beaches and not a single one of those beaches in that area or up and down the east coast allow cars to drive onto the beach and park there. So I'm curious as to why it is allowed on Teatahi Bay beach. I also don't believe that it is allowed on any other beach in the Greater Wellington region. That's all I have to say, really, just wanted to come and pusan and talk about how dangerous it is actually for children in particular to go to the beach and in the summer, I know this summer it's only gonna get worse, there are more and more vehicles that are parking up there every day, not to mention the ecological issues it creates by having these vehicles parked on that beach.
Okay Danielle, thank you very much for that. Councillors, are there any questions of Danielle? No, there aren't Danielle, I think you made your viewpoint pretty clear and we'll take that on board, thanks very much.
Also, thanks guys, have a great day.
Thank you. Do we have our second speaker? No? So, what do we do, adjourn or wait? We can wait. Oh, let's, yeah, let's adjourn again. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.
The general speed of traffic is a really good way of lowering overall noise as well. And then you're going to, you know, get, get the, um, the braking issue a lot, uh, you know, for kind of for free if they're not going as fast, you're not going to have as much braking. So encouraging public transport, walking and cycling, I think that's your question. And, uh, the thing I always pick up on there is use of the word encourage. Don't just do encourage, focus on enabling. Because enabling is what people need. They don't need a lot more encouragement. We've got encouragement out our ears with all the public health messaging of saying, hey, it's good for you. Uh, do more walking, do more cycling. Um, people get that message. We need, we need, uh, institutions like yourselves to enable. And, uh, if you build the facilities that will enable people, enable people to have access to, uh, to, um, e-bikes or bicycles for cheaper, um, better facilities for riding bicycles and walking, uh, better fares for public transport, enable people, don't encourage them or use encouragement as the last resort because if they're enabled to, they won't need so much encouragement. Uh, and yeah, some points there in my, um.
Alex, I'll just remind you, you've got one minute if you want questions.
I'll leave it there and, uh, questions if you want.
Okay, we, we do have a question from councillor Trillin.
Kiara, thank you, Alex. Um, I was enjoying what you're talking about towards the end there around enabling. And I wonder if you have anything specific that you would like to see happen in Purirua that would enable, um, better use of cycling and walking around our city.
Sure, um, yeah, sure. The, um, the thing I'm really encouraged here in Wellington is by Wellington City Council's, um, ambitious plan to install a large cycling network, uh, bike network, the Panike Poreneke Plan. And the, and, uh, but most importantly, the way they're going about doing that, which is repurposing street space and using a, um, traffic, uh, management plan and finding what works over time with that traffic management plan. So it'd be a longstanding traffic management plan. And then, um, listening to feedback, adjusting and learning, uh, listen and, um, and, uh, and then implementing for a longer time using a traffic resolution. So it bypasses the agonizingly slow, um, processes that councils, uh, consult on, um, sort of street by street design, which just inflames, uh, inflames bike lashings and other, um, yeah, terrible kind of.
Thank you, thank you, Alex, thank you. Uh, y- your time is up, we're not trying to cut you off, but we do have others waiting. So thanks very much for your comments, which, uh, we'll take into account.
No problem.
Um, good to see you.
Cool.
Thank you. Right, uh, I understand we now have Karen Carter on the.
Sorry, I'm just sorting myself out.
That's, uh, that's okay. So, uh, I, you're, I can see you, can you, you can obviously hear me?
Hi, yeah, I can.
And we, we can hear you as well.
Who am I talking to?
Um, it's Ross, Ross Leggett, I'm just the chair of Tipuna Korero. And we've got all the councillors round the table listening to you, Karen.
Hi councillors, hey, thanks so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Um, to be honest, I wasn't going to, but things have deteriorated so badly on Titahibay Beach recently that I thought I'd take the opportunity to, um, share some of the things that I see. Um, since the ill-advised publication of the front page article in the Kapimana News about a local Titahibay man who was deliberately intending to flout, um, the new rules on the beach when the new signs went up, after that, um, things have just exponentially deteriorated on the beach. Um, the rhetoric in, in social media is full of, um, vitriol and violence. And that plays out on the beach now where, um, particularly on these lovely evenings, um, the beach is absolutely full of people partying, playing boom boxes, drinking, smashing bottles, taking drugs, dealing drugs and then leaving all of this stuff on the beach. And so the locals, um, pick it all up. Um, I've come across all kinds of things, including, as I said, broken, lots of broken glass, lots of bottles, um, nappies, used condoms, vomit, um, food packages, all there all over the place. So that's part of the problem. And then the other part of the problem now is, um, tons and tons of cars coming onto the beach and just screeching up and down, racing up and right up and down the beach, the whole length of the beach. When the tide was out, right over the forest, um, doing wheelies with people hanging out of the car. And the other night, six or seven motorbikes splashing up and down the beach. And this isn't amongst people walking along the beach, children playing, dogs. Um, I think it's just a matter of time before someone is injured or worse. Um, in the past, the barriers have worked reasonably well. Um, you know, the warden would come and put the, put the barriers up. And mostly people respected that. I mean, you get some people who would deliberately drive around. And I have seen in the past the beach warden, um, threatened by, by people, um. But things are so bad now that I think unless the, um, unless the council comes up with some kind of drastic solution, I would worry for the safety of the newly appointed warden, um, now. Um, so solutions that I, I think the gate needs to be locked. I think there needs to be swipe card access for boat shed owners and fishers. I think there needs to be CCTV. And, um, I know that people will argue that, you know, what, what about, um, the beach for peo-, access to the beach for people who have mobility issues? Well, you know, I used to take my grandmother down to Takapuna Beach in Auckland. I would drive down to the beach, leave her sitting on a seat, drive away, park the car, walk back and ta- and that, that's the reality, um, on most beaches in New Zealand. Um, there's the car park in Tariri Road where you can see the beach beautifully if you have accessibility problems. And I suppose that there could be, um, you know, I, I, I don't know, maybe there could be other solutions, um, too. I'm not sure. And for those who argue that, um, that they've always had the right to park on the beach, well, I would just say, um, the beach is not a car park and things change. Um, the kings of England used to chop their wives' heads off, but they don't do that anymore because things change. And I think it's time for things to change now. And if not, um, you know, there could be blood on the council's hands actually, um, given, given what's happening down there now. So that's all I've got to say really, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Karen. I'll just see whether councillors have any questions that, uh, they'd like to ask you. Um, what you said was pretty clear, so, um, I'll just thank you again. And, um, we'll take your comments, uh, into consideration when we make our decision. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Bye, bye bye.
We have? Great. Uh, are you there? Is he even? Hello, Stephen, can you hear us? Nothing? Hello, Stephen, can you hear us?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
Hello, Stephen, you're talking.
Good morning, this is Stephen Warren.
Yeah, hi, Stephen, it's, uh, Ross Leggett here, I'm the chair of the Tipuna Korero that is, uh, hearing these submissions. So we've got all the councillors around the table. You've got 10 minutes, uh, a bell will ring at eight minutes. Um, if you want us to ask questions, you'll just remember to leave a bit of time at the end. So away you go, Stephen.
Yeah, uh, good morning, um, it's not a very, it's gonna be a very awkward situation whichever way it goes. Um, I've been a beach user, I still am a beach user, a fisher and a boat shed owner. Also a resident of Lamley Road. Over the last few years, we've seen a massive increase of parking in our streets, um, and activity on the beach. Um, up until this season, we used to have a, on the, put this on the parking issue, we used to have a cordon across the beach with waratahs and flags. Now, of late, that's gone and since it's been gone, the behaviour's been terrible. Motorbikes, cars, because there was nothing to limit it. Um, I believe basically it's an enforcement issue, the parking, um, and the behaviour on the beach. But I also hear from the, um, people in power that the police don't have the, uh, manpower or the resources. I've rung 111 myself before because I was told by the local Bobby that's the best way to get results. Motorbikes are a different issue because it doesn't matter how you stop vehicles getting on the beach, they only need 18 inches to sneak past and they have been a big problem lately. On the car parking, um, on the north end, there is not enough. Two Sundays ago, I come in from fishing, there was a hundred boat, a hundred vehicles on the beach for families and every car park in Bay Drive was full. The underused car park is one off Bothamley Lane, but it needs a sign, like a picture theatre or something to tell people it's there because a lot of people don't even know it's there. I think most of the issues with vehicles on the beach and behaviour, uh, associated with people from the vehicles is on the northern end. Um, I don't have any answers, but I do have worries that if we shut the beach off, a lot of people like elderly and that will be penalised. Um, I'm relieved to read that, uh, watercraft users like myself, I have a tractor and I toodle down there and launch my boat and park in the corner and go out. We have still got the use of, I don't know how they're going to manage it, but we have still got access to the beach for our fishing. Um, boat shed owners pay horrendous licence fee of over a thousand dollars. Uh, I feel that it's their right that they should have the rights to park on the ramp in front of their boat shed. I think that's a little bit unfair. Um, so that's my issue on that. As I say, it's a curly one, but the behaviour I've seen lately is atrocious, to say the least. I've heard from a couple of people, including my partner, um, what about CCTV to monitor? I've heard that somebody, people saying, well, it's got to be monitored. But I've also talked to somebody else, they can have the cameras rolling and it can be gone back over the next day. You don't, I believe you do not have to have somebody sitting there watching the screen. The buried forest, or supposedly fossilized forest, has been there for 300,000 years. Um, it's only exposed very few times a year. It's generally below high tide mark, um, and it's very rarely seen. So I think that's a red herring thrown out by the people that a certain faction have been trying to get the boats, the beach closed for 30 years. And I believe that's why the, um, it's my own belief is why they haven't put a, um, bollard thing up yet so they can take pictures of all the vehicles along the beach and say, this is what we're against and this is the reasons why. Um, that's basically how I see it. I would like to leave the status quo, but the behaviour does worry me. And I can't see an easy answer bar shutting the gates that is going to, um, sort this, well, this issue out because it is like, it's becoming a bigger issue all the time. This year, I, I've never seen anything like it, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much, Stephen, for your comments. Um, councillors, do you have any questions of Stephen? No, no, oh, yes, there is one question from councillor Duncan, Stephen.
Yeah, g'day, Stephen, thanks, thanks for that. Um, so you were saying about parking a hundred cars along the beach the other day and the, where.
And I've kept numbers, I, that was on the Sunday of the 10th, I think it was, here it was, now I've got to run down here. On Sunday of the 7th, there was over a hundred cars on the beach.
Yep.
Every car park in Bay Drive was full, it was a beautiful day. And on the Monday, I, so for the rest of the week, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday, there were over 60 cars every night.
Okay.
On the beach.
Okay, so, so you are saying that council's going to need to look at parking if, um, if that preceded?
I think, and the only place there is parking is in the Nixon block. I think they've got to, there's a gully in front of the existing car parks there. They, they've got to, they're going to have to create more parking because I live in Lamley Road and it's a busy road now. Now, people are going to be parked up and down Lamley Road and it's dangerous. Um, and a boat in a, uh, uh, just in my case, boating, a boat in a trailer is 11 metres long. Um, they can't park in those angle parks. You might get three on Bay Drive, but parking is, to me, the biggest issue.
Yep.
Mr Duncan.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, any other questions, councillors? No, there are no other questions, Stephen, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity, uh, to put my input in, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a mute? We do? Hello? Jana, is it? Hello, can you hear us? Hello? No. She's gone. Yeah. Is it Jana or Jana? Thank you. Hello? Uh, you're on mute, Jana.
Apologies, everybody, good morning.
Uh, welcome, Jana. Um, I, I'll just let you know, you, you probably already know, but you've got 10 minutes. Um, a bell will ring at eight minutes, uh, if you want us to ask any questions or you want to leave time to ask questions. Um, so, uh, awa- away you go. Are you there?
Okay, so I just, yeah, I just feel like I, um, it's important to me to say that on behalf of families and myself, I just feel that the costs that are being imposed to residents are really creating further struggle and ultimately driving families away. I've got my two-year-old son with me, so I bear with me if, um, he's making background noise. But I really do feel that the, with the increase of costs as a rate, as a rate payer, um, it really is difficult enough financially for families. And then to have these mandatory costs added to the city makes it harder during a time that's already financially difficult for families. And I just, so it's just really important for me to say, um, that I think these decisions are driving residents out and it's, we see it happen all the time in countries, but it's and in our country, but in, in cities. But I just think if it can be avoided or if some compassion or some consideration for the families who are already struggling, if there's any way, uh, you know, if there's any way to take it into consideration and to, um, to be kind to people and, um, to, you know, to take away that financial burden and, and stress on families. I think it's, I think it's needed to be said and, yeah, I think, yeah, so that's with regards to the parking fees. But with regards to the, um, with regards to the vehicles on the beach, like I said, I've got a two-year-old son with me and there have been numerous times that I have wanted to take him to the beach and it has been dangerous for him. Like he has gone walking and there have been cars doing donuts, there's been cars driving all the way along the beach. And as a parent with a two-year-old under the family's look, and, and it's, it's really, really frightening to have your two-year-old on the beach and with cars doing donuts right next to it because it's so unpredictable and dangerous. And as a result, we don't go, I live in Titahibay, just up the road and I love living in Titahibay. I love having this. Speak, North Basie's doing, um, that really makes it dangerous for us and we don't go as regularly as a result. And it's the same with the parking fees that may be imposed here.
Jana, you, you're breaking up, sorry.
Costs because the parking situation is. Thanks. I hardly ever go to Wellington because, because the parking situation is so difficult. And I could imagine that going in this direction, Pororau will do the same, you know? My desire, like, my desire to stay in Pororau isn't as high, as difficult, as. As, as becoming.
Just wait till that grows. Hey, Jana? Can you, can you hear us?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Jana?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, you're, you've been breaking up a little bit, but I think we've got, um, the, the key elements of your message in terms of, uh, parking, uh, and also danger of, uh, o- o- on the beach, particularly for young families. Is there any, are there any other points you'd like to make for us or to us?
Um, so just to.
Sorry. Jana, we, we can't hear you.
Can you please re-shush it or I'll put you outside, okay, I'm on a phone call? Can you please just, can you please just tell me what you've taken from what I've had to say? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you. Can't, can't.
Great, can you please just, um, tell me what you've taken from?
Uh, well, uh, the, the, the comments that I've, um, what I've taken from you is, uh, is about, um, the issue of parking costs, um, and pressure on families and the dangers for young families on the beach of Titahibay Beach, is that correct?
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, I just thank you for your, um, submission to us here and, um, I wish you all the best with your two-year-old, uh, for the rest of the day. All right, that's good. So we now have. Simon, have we? Ti ti ti, pano ruru, Simon. Hello?
Kiara, can you hear me?
Kiara, yes, we can hear you, Simon, but we can't see you. Is that, are we meant to?
I don't have, I don't have the camera, sorry.
Oh, that's, that's fine, we, we can hear you. Um, my name's Ross Leggett, I'm chair of Tipuna Korero. Um, and, uh, we have all the rest of the councillors here listening, uh, to you regarding your submission. You've got 10 minutes, um, a bell will ring at eight. So if you want us to ask any questions, then you just need to leave a bit of time. So, uh, away you go.
Uh, Kiara, greetings and tena kato ka tō. Ko mangahumea te munga, ko mangatu te awa, ko rāwari tamunu i te tangata. Ko mangatu te marae, ko te naaware te fare, ko na riki kaiputahi, te hapu mete iwi. Ko ruru toku ingoa te faana, ko Simon Nita toku ingoa, tena kato, tena kato.
Yes, we do, Simon.
People that own property, um, and they, because they have property, they should be entitled or they are entitled rightfully to travel to their property whenever they require or they wish to do so because it is actually their property. Um, and do the councillors actually believe that they can restrict those rights of men and women? And if they do believe that, can I also get a copy of proof for that? Uh, let's go to five. How should the council improve access of people with mobility issues at Titahibay Beach? Well, if we go back to point three, um, the proposal is to restrict access by cars that people are using to travel. And you sort of, um, I don't know why you need an answer to that question from me because you're sort of restricting that capability if you're considering imposing restrictions on people's right to travel to the beach. Six. Can you think of a good reason why council should not have power to restrict heavy vehicle parking in residential areas? Interesting, yes. My answer to that is yes because you're restricting the ability of people to provide security for their property. Um, and can you lawfully restrict that right? And if you can, can you also provide me with the proof of the ability to lawfully restrict people's rights to have their property outside their house or within a residential area or the land in which they occupy? Seven. Engine braking. Do you agree engine braking is an issue that needs to be managed through restriction or prohibition? Well, if we look at it, the answer's going to have to be no because a truck or a vehicle or a car or whatever it is that uses engine braking has been, you'd probably find it's been legally manufactured and that capability is legally given to it during its manufacturing process. So if people are travelling using their truck or they're travelling using a vehicle that has air braking capacity, what rights do we have to impede their method of travel by restricting the capability of their vehicles if it's a legally functioning vehicle that has a certificate of fitness or a warrant of fitness? Um, if you do have that ability, I'd be interested in seeing it. So if you can provide me with that proof, that'd be awesome. Eight. What would the council do to encourage better use of? What would you like the council to do to encourage better use of public transport, walking and cycling? Well, not much really because I think the ability to, to do those things and use those things is well known by most people. Where the problem seems to exist is that through heaps of restrictive policies and acts and statutes and things like that, their ability to undertake those core capabilities that they can actually do is heavily restricted by the need to work to pay for their existence. So I don't believe it would be a good thing to do for the council to spend any money in that area because it's just money that we're going to have to pay back at some time in the future for a purpose that achieves nothing because people already are aware of this. It's just their ability to do so is sort of heavily restricted. And do you have any other comments about the proposed traffic bylaw? Certainly I wouldn't consent to that bylaw myself and I wouldn't want to enter into any contract about that bylaw. But I'm happy, I'm not saying I'm not going to do that, but I'm happy to receive the contract and have a look at it myself so that I could respond and we can into some form of contract about proposed traffic bylaw. I think that pretty much covers everything.
Okay, Simon, thank you very much for that. Councillors, are there any questions? No, we don't have any questions for you, Simon. So thanks very much for your comments.
Awesome. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your time and enjoy the rest of your day. Goodbye.
What was that? So we'll just adjourn for a few minutes until we have. Councillors, we don't have Tahiti Akavi. No, okay. So what we'll do. Nice. We've had Simon. Yep. So what we'll do is we'll move to item 6.2, which is the Pooru Adventure Park, okay? So we're just doing this in the meantime, so we save time at the end. So I will, if we're all there, councillors, with that, we're up with that. 6.2, item 6.2. Yep, 1666. Yeah, okay. I will now move the item to put it on the table. Do I have a second, please? Mayor Baker, thank you very much. Right, I am taking this as read and you'll understand here that we're just extending condition dates in the agreement to lease between council and the Adventure Park Limited partnership. So that's all we're doing. We're not talking about any guarantee or anything like that. That will be coming to us later. Claire Nolan is here. If, and I am taking it as read, not asking Claire to run through all the issues, but if councillors have any questions of Claire, please ask. Yes, councillor Duncan, you might want to come up to the mic. Or yeah, go via to Izzy's, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for this, Claire. Look, one thing that struck me, I know we're not discussing the guarantee, but I wonder if this hinges on the guarantee and whether or not we're not doing this in the wrong order.
I think, yeah, I think the chief executive will.
No, they're separate issues. The guarantee, the proposed guarantee is completely separate issue.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I just think that does this hinge on the guarantee going through? If it doesn't, then it's a moot point, isn't it?
We understand not.
No, no. Yep, I'll allow it, councillor Duncan.
Martin Jenkins 2018 was based on pre-COVID advice. Do they still stand by their report?
Still, we haven't asked them that. We are still using that report. Obviously, I don't think we want to spend any more money and commission another report, but you know, that's not my decision.
I just think that the whole thing was based on tourism, cruise ships coming in and 90 employees and that. I wonder how valid those numbers are.
Well, I don't disagree, but all we're being asked to do here is to extend condition dates. So we're not actually doing anything. Is that correct?
We are getting that information. We are refreshing that information for the bank guarantee, not for this paper.
Don't spend too much on it. Okay, are there any other questions, councillors? If not, it's pretty straightforward. If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against, carried. Thank you very much, Claire. So do we have? Sorry?
No.
We have 6.3. We can go to Zach's. We've got Zach on 6.3. Okay, let's move to, seeing as we have time. Let's move to item 6.3, which is the Three Waters Service Delivery. This was a November update. Look, I'm going to move it to get it on the table. Do I have a second, please? Yeah, councillor Trillin, as I was looking at you. And we'll take it as read, Zach. So are there any, just before we ask questions, councillor Baker, are there any updates to this that you want to, oh, sorry, mayor Baker? Mayor Baker, one day I'll get it right. I was hurt by the strap, yeah. So. If you can keep a straight face, would you like to update us, Zach?
There are no significant updates or details.
Okay, that's great. So Mayor Baker had a question.
I'm not even sure if it's really for you, maybe for the CE. Other councils are going out and doing some form of consultation? I know it's not our consultation, but are we going to do something even if it's online? So our residents feel like they're feeding back even though it's not to us, to government?
So the current decision has been made to not consult as is where is right now because there has been limited direction from central government around this. The cabinet paper talks to future consultation and working with local government. So some other councils have made that decision, but in reality, we don't know what, in fact, we're consulting on. The mandatory all-in approach may take it out of our hands in terms of a decision. So we are effectively a holding pen to wait and see when and if we need to do consultation.
Do you have any further comments?
So I think it's pretty important that we make it very clear to our community that this is a government reform programme. This is not our reform. And therefore I would suggest that even when the draft legislation is available, when the bill's available, that we do a bit of a light-touch engagement rather than a consultation as such because we don't have a decision to make. It will be a mandatory, it's a mandatory all-in process, but we do probably as a council feel that we should take soundings from our community to inform our own position. So I think we need to kind of do a light-touch engagement and encourage people to submit directly to the government through the select committee process. So it's a bit of a wayfinding thing, saying go that way. Talk to these guys who actually get to make the decision. But that our job will be to inform and make sure people have the right information. And we will want to submit ourselves very possibly depending on how those governance arrangements play out with the working group that is about to have its first meeting today, I do believe. So, yes, so that is what, at this stage anyway, I would recommend.
Thank you. Councillor Duncan, you have a question?
Yeah, on page 1677, item 29B, other working groups. Rural and community water schemes. Cabinet acknowledges there's a range of complex issues relating to rural and community water schemes. In Entity C, we've got the Chatham Islands. Does that include the Chatham Islands? Because I believe that's one of the herd of elephants in this room.
I don't know who is on that working group. We do have the Chatham Islands in Entity C. I had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago and I did ask them the state of their water infrastructure and they told me it's pretty good. So, and that they, they are a bit different from the rest of us. They've never funded their own water infrastructure. The government has funded their water infrastructure. So actually, they have had Crown grants to get their water infrastructure up to readiness and they have some quite big works underway at the moment and they think at transition that they're in a reasonably good position. So I'm just telling you what I've been told.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from councillor Hayward?
Kia ora kauru, matua kia mana. My partai is around if there is a submission from the council in terms of the proposed legislation, noting full well the CE's response that we don't know, we can't really say whether we will put a submission in because we don't really know what the legislation that's been proposed is going to have in it. But can I perhaps suggest that if we are going to put a submission in, that that may be the opportunity to fold in the feedback from the community that the mayor has suggested in her previous partai? Furthermore, that again, can we just get clarity that this would be, if we do do a submission, that this is going to be able to go to the public? Or at least they'll be able to cite it before it actually is formally put into parliament? So at least they can see where a council's current thinking is, kia ora.
Thank you, councillor.
I think that's what I was suggesting is that the community input that we receive, we could reflect in our submissions. So typically, we don't get very much time to write submissions. So whether we would promulgate a submission before we made a submission, I'm just not sure that we would have the ability to do that because apparently the legislation's going to be available pre-Christmas. But the timeframes after Christmas are quite tight. And of course, New Zealand, including most of my staff, go on holiday for a good period over January. So our ability to do that would be unusual for us. And I don't quite know what we'd do with the feedback. I think we would, I think in a submission, we would say our community has this range of opinions that we have heard and you would decide where you sit within that range of opinions. So that would be typically how we would do that.
Yeah, councillor Hayward.
One sec. Is there a likelihood that rather than Poodidua doing its own submission, that it may choose to do a submission jointly with other councils?
Kind of unlikely. I'd... Um, kind of unlikely. I, I don't know that we would get that level of, um, alignment from other councils and would take longer than the time available. So there is a possibility that Wellington Water Committees do something and in fact Wellington Water may put in its own submission. Uh, that would be a matter for the committee. Um, it, that is likely to be more operational, I suspect. Um, but that's probably the closest we would get to some alignment, I think. The, there's quite a lot of variety in the region, so I, I just don't know, um, how close we could get to it. And we've all got slightly different interests. So Greater Wellington's got the bulk water interest. Uh, they've probably got, you know, less customer interface as a result of that. So there's, it's just that I think we're all probably going to just make our own submissions.
Any other questions, councillors? I, I have a question, um, regarding light touch consultation. I mean, uh, it's engagement, oh, sorry, engagement. Um, I, I'm not sure, can, can you give me some understanding of how we might go about that, given the amount of misinformation that is out there at the moment, which tends to be colouring people's opinions?
Well, it depends very much on how the government approaches their consultation. Um, so we are expecting some collateral to come out of government. We'd want to piggyback off that, not duplicate it. We don't want to spend a lot of money. This is a government reform programme. So certainly we'd have very strong, um, social media and website, um, coverage. Um, we may want to run a webinar or to ourselves. Um, uh, haven't really designed this, but we, we're really waiting to see what the, what the Department of Internal Affairs does. Um, and we're hopeful that they will put some good, you know, solid information in readable form into the public space.
Yeah, thank you. Um, are there any other questions from councillors? I think, you know, Zach, you've covered the issues in the paper well and it's pretty clear what our submission. There are some key things in there that our submission will concentrate on. It's just some of these other outlying things. And it'll be interesting to see what happens with this new group that meets tomorrow. Did you say when? Do you want today? And what comes out of that is feedback to, um, to government. So, uh, that being the case, no other questions. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Those against? Carried. Thank you. Thanks, Zach. Yes, so we'll, we'll adjourn, uh, for a break and we'll be back here at te, uh, ten fifteen. Do we have?
councillor Waddell is just out for a short time and councillor Wee Harpy is back. So let's, let's start again. Oh, somebody, is that you Catherine? Are you there? I think, are you on, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Ah, great.
Yes, I can hear you. How's it?
Great. That's, that's excellent. I'm Ross Leggett. I'm chair of the Tipuna Korero. And the other councillors are around, ready to listen to you. You've got 10 minutes. We've, we've read your submission, obviously. You've got 10 minutes. A bell will ring after eight. So if you want questions, just remember to leave a little bit of time at the end. So.
Sure, no problem. Thank you.
Way you go Catherine.
Look, Corina, shirakato. KJ Dillon. I'm a Poirot resident of 40 years and a rate payer for about 25 odd years. Talking on two issues, especially around parking. Look, you've read the submission. I'm taking it as read. The key point that I'd like to get across to councillors is simply that we are entering into an economic recession. It hasn't hit hard yet, but it will. So why should we make it more difficult for Poirot businesses to survive? The charging of parking for residents creates a further barrier for people coming into the city. And I think we want to avoid that. I think we really need to make sure that it's easy and simple for residents to do their business and to purchase as required in the city. It's not just for the purchase of goods. It's also for the access to critical services in the city area as well. So I'm not coming at it purely from a shopping angle. It's also about our elderly people, our vulnerable community being able to access the health services that they require, the financial services support they require in the city as well. I think the point that I'd like to make also, in addition to the cost factor and it creating a barrier and reducing Poirot's economic competitive advantage, is actually to do with the mega trend that is hitting Poirot City already, which is the advent of internet shopping. So my, my point here is a really simple one. With COVID, consumers have all learnt to shop online and to get things delivered. That has taken away revenue from Poirot businesses already. It's really easy for me to get whatever I require delivered to my door. It's super convenient and actually pretty low cost. If goods in Poirot City for me personally become more expensive because I have to pay for parking as well, I'll simply just do all of my business online. There are not that many Poirot businesses that are online yet for shopping. So I'd just like to factor in that consumer mega trend as well for you to consider as part of your deliberations on this matter. That's pretty much all I've got to say around the issue of parking, apart from what's already in my submission. The second point I'd like to make is actually with regard to the coastal access in Titahie Bay. Sorry, I'm just in a slightly noisy background because I'm outside. It's fitting around. And so look, I'm, I'm talking to you in this capacity as the holder of a coastal access permit. So my family and I live in Parramatta's Golden Gate community. We're one of the few houses that require a coastal access permit in order to be able to drive along the beach. Because of the access to our property, things that other residents take for granted aren't possible for us. And we rely on coastal access, really steep sections, no road access. Difficult or unsafe access means that for deliveries such as garden mulch, replacing the fridge, we have to be able to drive along the beach. In order to do this, we require a coastal access permit, which requires working with both Poirot City Council and also the Greater Wellington Regional Council. It's a really time consuming and costly exercise. But what it does do is it safeguards the beach access, it safeguards the environment of the beach. It ensures there's proper monitoring and that the ecological system of the coast is, is not damaged. My position with regards to the Titahie Bay beach and vehicle access. I acknowledge that vehicles have been driving on the beach for many, many decades. That point goes without saying really. The point that I'd like councillors to consider is why is it that we care about the coastal area in the areas like Parramatta and Pa'ata Hanoi and any other coastal area of Poirotua? But at Titahie Bay, we don't have those safeguards in place. So my, my suggestion to councillors is really simple. I'm not saying ban beach access because there will be some legitimate reasons why beach access is required. What I am suggesting though, is the council does what it does in every other part of the Poirot area, which is to require a coastal access permit for people to, or to drive on the beach. This can be coordinated with the Greater Wellington Regional Council if necessary. What this will do is it will make sure that the marine environment is actually protected. It'll stop people from driving on the beach unnecessarily, but not preclude it as an option for people that have to have that access. Having grown up in Poirotua and visited Titahie Bay beach for pretty much my whole life, there are no access issues for people with mobility issues to stop them coming from, to the beach. So the argument of people being able to drive onto the beach just to have a nice beach day doesn't personally fly well with me. But I do think that coastal access should be permitted for those who have a genuine and very necessary reason to be on the beach with a vehicle. Normal beach goes, that one doesn't really fly because the access to Titahie Bay requires a vehicle. My suggestion is simple. Just be consistent with everything else that you've done in Poirot, eloquently in my written submission. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you Catherine. Councillors, do we have some questions?
In regards to your, to your particularly in Cobham Court in half.
Pretty hard to identify. But the challenge that we have with our cities, open up for worker car parking. The challenge that we, as we all well know from the railway station in. Do need to nut out, but I think you also need to. The city as cheap as possible. In terms of the workers in the car parking areas, the trouble is just how you then get those people to the working area. Come as tough too. So not a tricky, not a simple, not a simple issue for councillors to resolve. I don't envy you, but I think you need to be very careful about what you wish for in terms of disincentivising worker parking. And I'll get my services in town or in other, other regions.
Okay.
Economic recession coming. We've got a great opportunity as a city to create, create an economic advantage by having free parking. It could be an advantage over Johnsonville and Wellington and the Harch. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much Catherine. I don't think there are any other questions from councillors. So again, thanks very much. I, I personally envy your location compared to where we are now. But so carry on and have a good rest of the day.
Well, I've just done the loop, so I'm feeling buggered. But yeah, sorry, not much to share for you guys today. Good luck with that.
Thanks.
Kia ora, thank you.
Right. Do we have the Chamber of Commerce now? Oh, I see them. Ah, good morning Hamish.
Corina, how you doing?
Good, good. Hiya. So you'll know the, the rules, rules, the guidelines. You've got 10 minutes. A bell will ring at eight minutes. If you've got any ques, if you want any questions, just leave a bit of time. So where you both go?
Well, fine. So I'm joined today with, by Holly Carter and also Steve Lovell might be joining us on the court. I want to begin by acknowledging the previous debater whose views I, we agree really strongly with. I think she articulated the points against pay parking in a really positive fashion. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. But also to acknowledge that the chamber and council both support a shared vision for, for Poirot City. We all want to be, want what's best for our city and to progress forward. So to that end, we're all on the same page. And it comes down to a question of how we execute on that because right now, Poirot Business, like all business around the country, are facing an immense challenge from pandemic, from lockdowns and from the uncertainty that creates. It's hard. And from our perspective, this change comes at a time which is only going to add further pressure to our already struggling businesses who are already employing our people and have already supported our people through, through considerably challenging times. They've borne the brunt of the financial burden of that and used wave subsidies and other assistance to help. But that doesn't close the gap entirely. So the question I think that council officers and viewers, councillors must answer and satisfy yourself on is whether this proposal mitigates or exacerbates the impact of COVID on our business and on our community. So I'll leave that for you to consider. And it's not an easy thing for you guys to have to lay out. So I don't envy you in that respect. But I think it's, it's an immediate question here that needs to be answered. The other side of this, and it's the previous debater sort of called out, is that this is going to discourage people from entering our city. This is a CBD that the council has already, already put millions of dollars into revitalising. And I want to acknowledge the work that's done on that. Your Cobham Court is a different place now than what it was five, 10 years ago. But the investment is going to go to waste if we're going to deter people from, from shopping in our city. I know that the majority of the submitters on this proposal were against it in the LTP. We are a majority of rate payers are in opposition to a proposal. From our perspective, the open space is on council to prove why this is needed beyond reasonable doubt. And the contents and all of the consultation documents, all of the releases about this, to our mind, don't prove that. So given we've got limited time speaking and you guys have had a chance to, to write just our submission, I just want to quickly go through the highlights. At the end of the day, this is a really blunt tool which is going to push people away from Poirot rather than pushing people towards alternative forms of transport. Now, motor shift is definitely important and we're all on the same page with that. But this is a carrot stick conversation. The carrot to get people onto motor shift is a big one. Whereas we're coming in with the punitive approach of paying people to discourage parking in our city. Which is going to hurt our retailers, going to hurt the people who are employing our young people and our locality. And we need to get people in to keep employing our people. I've also got issues around equity and access issues. So the council's comms team described the parking charges as being small change. That doesn't sit well with me because a dollar, two dollars to us might be small change, but it's not to everyone in our community. It's un, it's an unhelpful comment to be honest. And I think we need to realise that small change can be an unsustainable barrier for some people coming into our city, which being discouraged access creates this equity and access problem. Our LTP submission raised issues about the lack of support and detail around this. There's no detail in the, in the LTP about capital investment costs, about revenue protection, about parking behaviours. We, we made the decision to move through paid parking without understanding what the cost would be, what they're going to do to people movement, how fewer people are getting interested in this result. And it's still missing from the consultation documents. There's no analysis of similar sized cities. So there's a comment, right? We're one of the last places in New Zealand and off the size doesn't have some form of pay parking. That's the comment in, in the LTP and in the consultation document. But of the five cities that make up the Greater Wellington region, two of them don't have pay parking. Cowrie doesn't have pay parking. Uppahut doesn't have pay parking. Patoni, who is arguably comparable to Poirot, doesn't have pay parking. So to go where one of the last places in New Zealand and using that pay parking simply doesn't stack up. If you look at the quotes coming out of the Uppahut council website, you're made and employed from your website, want to encourage people to come and shop in each of the variety of stores and cafes that Uppahut has to offer where there are no parking charges for parking within this. So to go, Poirot needs to do it too because everyone else does. So there isn't, so there isn't true. When you go further, you go, well, similar sized cities in Poirot do have a fixed out pay, a fixed hour free policy. You go, well, maybe we can copy that, but let's see the analysis around it to inform what's been decided for Poirot. We remain unconvinced about the justification for A, pay parking and B, the workability of a 30 minute free or an hour free. If that is workable, then so too is the existing parking policy, particularly in Cobham Court. So we'd encourage you to invest in monitoring and the, the monitoring is critical to the implementation of any changes that we, that we saw make. If we do go down this path, this is a move, and as this is a move to use a pay as any additional revenue should and our LTP bring to offset other costs to city businesses. The spare change that is going into these parking venues is coming out of the revenue that these businesses would otherwise enjoy. So rather than this revenue being dumped into the general rating tag, it should be brought in, particularly for the businesses in Poirot City. We think who are the ones that are going to be most significantly impacted by, by this policy. Finally, I just want to read you some of the comments that we have received on behalf of our members throughout Poirot. This change will mean less customers will come and buy from both the businesses in Poirot. This will negatively affect my business and others that are here. Now, this goes to youth employment. We've got a massive youth employment problem that we're all working hard to resolve. You have partners Poirot, other organisations in our city are doing great things in this area. But now we have a change in the parking policy which is going to negatively affect them. Just as we're becoming a vibrant city, bringing people in from everywhere, we would request that councils do not ruin it for us. It's the highest rates in the country. So we now have to pay in addition to when we go to shop. Claiming that councils believe that will make it easier to find a parking that's ingenious and will make it harder to do business in our city. And finally, as a Poirot City business owner, I believe this is a bad move. If Poirot City Council wants to kill Poirot and charge parking, it will send people to the mall and kill the surrounding street businesses. Which is something we're seeing happen in the lower heart. Or it takes it for us to compare Queensgate versus the lower heart CBD. And we see the, the consequence of, of similar policies. So thank you all for, for taking the time to read our proposal. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us this morning. Our welcome.
Thanks Hamish. We, we've got a question from councillor Trillin.
Kia ora Hamish, thank you. We're, we're in a little bit of a tough position here in that the cost of car parking does have to be covered. Um, we, we're in a little bit of a tough position here in that the cost of car parking does have to be covered from somewhere. And we're, we're also conscious of costs, um, as you've raised, and that's part of the reason why we don't want car parking costs to fall on ratepayers, which is where that cost would fall. So, so my question is, is it the position of the chamber that you would prefer for the cost of parking to fall on ratepayers and result in higher rates? And if not, how do you want to see parking funded?
Sure, councillor, thank you for your question. Um, the starting position for me is to make a shift like this, we've got to have a justification for change rather than change simply to, to shift the cost. Because I agree with the sentiment of the question in that the cost is carried by someone and it's by either ratepayers or a user pays situation. The issue we've got with users of pay becomes that we're shifting to people, A, who can't afford it, B, we're shifting to people who are going to then spend less with our businesses and then C, are going to create acquisitions for them to retire. It's also going to drive people to the mall. So as the previous submitter said, you know, she won't be spending her money on the CBD. If she has to pay for parking, she'll either go to the mall or buy a bike. Now, that might not be true for everyone, but it's going to be true for a lot of people. And it's going to put a lot of stress on to people that can't afford the spare change to, to park in our city. So while it does keep the burden with ratepayers, yes, that cost, I think it is preferable to introducing a pay parking which has, um, a series of knock-on effects that frankly aren't understood.
Thank you, thank you, Hamish. I'm not going to allow any more questions because we've, our, our time is up. Sorry, councillors, we can have that debate and discussion because they've raised some issues for us along with others, um, when we come to make our final decision. So thank you very much, uh, Chamber of Commerce for, um, coming in. And, uh, I'm sure we're going to have some discussion around the points you've raised along with others. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll now move on to Brian Warburton. That's number 508, the submission. Brian, are you there?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. So, um, Brian, you've got, uh, 10 minutes and, um, a bell will ring at eight. Uh, if you want, uh, any questions or you want to leave time for questions, you'll just have to, uh, bear that in mind, okay?
Probably more of a case if you guys have got questions of me, but anyway.
No, no, that's, that's what I mean. We may have questions of you, all right? Away you go.
Okay, as you said, my name's Brian Warburton. I've been a resident of Titahe Bay for more than 20 years. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the council's proposed transport bylaw. I hope all councillors have read my nine-page submission. I've restricted my comments to two matters, clause 9.8 of the bylaw entitled vehicles on beaches. And the second one is matters relating to the council's resolution under 981, 983A of the bylaw as they relate to Titahe Bay. Clauses 981, 982 and 983B. I support clauses 981, 982 of the proposed bylaw, subject to the term beach being defined. I generally support 983B, subject to the term beach being defined and the draft clause being tightened to specify the circumstances under which permission might be granted and by whom. Unless beach is defined, the bylaw will be unenforceable. I've included a proposed definition of the beach as it relates to Titahe Bay. In essence, I'm suggesting that beach could be all of the unvegetated ground exposed between the lowest, sorry, the most highest high tide and the lowest tide between Vella Street at the northern end and Stuart Park at the southern end. Clauses 981 and 983B. I oppose 983, oh, sorry, 983A. I apply, I oppose clause 983A of the proposed bylaw as it relates to Titahe Bay. I gather this is intended to allow any and all vehicles on the beach if they are towing a trailer. We also gather that the council might be considering allowing any vehicles if they are associated with one or more boat sheds. I would oppose a council resolution made under 981 if that gave such access rights. With the exception of maintaining law, surf life-saving and council operations, I consider that vehicle access to and parking on the beach to be inappropriate. I have several reasons for holding this view and they are outlined in my written submission. In summary, those reasons are the right of access to a public road. The public has a common law right to access the beach where it is within legal roads immediately adjacent to the northern and southern boat sheds. Both those group of boat sheds are occupying legal road which was vested by deposit of a survey plan. For a good proportion of the year, that access for public is not possible due to the boat shed owner's perceived right to occupy public land with stuff normally associated with residential use. This includes suns, shade sails, windbreaks, picnic tables, barbecues, couches, chairs and what have you. Second reason is section 6D of the RMA and policy 19 of the New Zealand Coastal Policy Statement. There is a public expectation of and need for walking access to and along the coast that is practical, free of charge and safe for pedestrian use. This is frequently not possible, particularly at high tides when the boat shed owners have established occupation over the public road. Third reason, proposed natural resources plan. Rule R19 of the proposed natural resources plan does not permit vehicles for launching, retrieving or temporary mooring of vessels because there is, and I quote, "a boat ramp shall be used if available at locality." This rule is now in effect. Fourth reason, section nine of the RMA restrictions on the use of land. The activities undertaken on the, on land immediately adjacent to the boat sheds and in legal road, particularly during summer, is of the type not, not authorised by section nine of the RMA. TCC has the obligation to ensure boat shed owners do not breach the restrictions of section nine. And this bylaw is the means for achieving that. Fifth reason, safety considerations. I have observed many instances of unsafe use of motor vehicles. Some examples are driving recklessly or dangerously, careless or inconsiderate driving, driving an unsafe vehicle, driving with an unsafe load, particularly just the other day when somebody was leaning out a window, driving a motorbike while not wearing a helmet, driving while under the influence of alcohol so there is not proper control of the vehicle. I've also experienced and witnessed abusive and threatening behaviour from occupants of motor vehicles directed at legitimate beachgoers. If safety is the council's, and I quote from the consultation document, number one priority, then banning vehicles from the beach is the only way of meaningfully achieving that. Sixth reason, amenity considerations. In general terms, people visit the beach because it gives them a sense of emotional and social wellbeing and because the experience adds to their amenity values. I have cited various extracts from the council's consultation. For example, and I quote, "Council wants our beaches to be safe and enjoyable places for people and their families." Maintaining and enhancing amenity values for users of the beach seems to be the council's aim. Banning vehicles from the beach is the only way for meaning, meaningfully achieving that. Seventh reason, natural value considerations. As noted in my submission, most of the beach, as I have defined it above, is contained within significant natural area, ECNA 14O in the new proposed district plan. As far as I can gather, the scheduling of ECNA 14O is now beyond challenge, or in other words, no submitter sought its removal or revision. Vehicle use of the beach is incompatible with the protection the council wants to achieve with ECNA 14O. In summary, I support the concept of a bylaw. I want a workable definition of the beach as it applies to Titahe Bay. I want clarity around permissions from the council. I want the council to resolve under clause 981 that clause 983A does not apply to Titahe Bay because it is compatible with at least four statutory matters, namely, namely, common law right of access to public roads. Uh, rule R19O, the proposed natural resources plan, which deals with vehicles on beaches. Section 6D of the RMA, public access to and along the coast. And section nine of the RMA restrictions on the use of land. And the second reason is vehicle access to the beach is inappropriate when safety, amenity and natural value considerations are taken into account. And lastly, I want the council to resolve that vehicles are prohibited from Titahe Bay beach unless clause 983B or clause 983C applies. Thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you very much, Brian. Um, how lo, how much time have we got to go, Caroline?
Two and a half.
Okay, um, do councillors have any questions for Brian? No, I think, uh, thank you for your comments and, uh, we will certainly take them into consideration. Thank you very much, Brian.
Cheers.
Thanks. Okay, do we have Living Streets? Oh, yes, I can, sorry, I can see. Ellen, is it? Uh, you can hear me. Um, do you want to just say something? So I'll just make sure you, we can hear you.
You want to kaitai?
Yep, excellent, excellent. So you've got 10 minutes, um, and a bell will ring after eight minutes. So if you want us to ask, uh, any questions, just be sure you leave a bit of time at the end. Uh, other than that, away you go.
Good, um, you want to kaitai, uh, Corinna Blake, how, call, uh, kaitoui toia, fanganui atala, um, kee Living Streets Aotearoa. So I'm the Wellington coordinator for Living Streets Aotearoa, who is the national pedestrian advocacy group. Um, and thanks for, um, letting me speak to you today. Um, I just had a little scrabble around looking for the Zoom link. Um, we, so Living Streets has been very interested in, um, the traffic bylaws, um, and things that people are doing around the country. And particularly because we've had a long-running, um, campaign for no footpath parking, please. And, um, I don't know if you've seen, uh, um, if you can see that, it's a, a yellow foot. Here we go, somewhere in there. Um, there's, there's a little, uh, signs that we give to people to leave on wind screens that say, please don't park on the footpath, it puts others at risk. You could be towed or fined, children could get hit or forced onto the road. Wheelchairs and pushchairs can't get passed and vision impaired people could injure themselves. So we've had a, um, real interest to make sure that people can live in nice communities where it's easy to, to walk around. So that's our kind of, um, where we're coming from with some of this stuff. So we really support, um, where we're doing the updating their, um, bylaw, the traffic bylaw and supports things that they, like being able to charge for parking, having safe beach space at Titahe Bay, um, and things like that. Um, we've got a little suggestion that if you wanted to make Titahe Bay wheelchair accessible, you can, there are, um, some quite cool mats and things that you can use and wheelchair, um, beach wheelchairs that people can use, um, if you want to go down that road. Um, so we, we support the, um, idea that to shift the mode of travel, um, to more healthy and community-based ways. Um, so some of the comments on our, um, on the submission to the traffic bylaw were around the definitions. Um, and please, um, our suggestion is to just use the transport, um, legislation de- definitions for things like footpath and pedestrian and shared path. And, um, as, as scooters are a, a new, a new way of getting around, um, and they seem to be developing quite rapidly, it's, I would suggest using, um, the, a more open definition that includes things talking about it as micro-mobility because I think that's where people will be speaking in the future. Um, what else do we have to say? Um, so I, I don't, I don't really want to read through all of our, our comments. Um, we've, we've got a few suggestions about adding things and removing other things just to make sure that it's really clear that parking on the footpath is not allowed. Um, you, you see things happening all the time that we had sent a picture of, um, a photo with a large, um, removal truck just parked right across the footpath. People do this all the time. It's really hard for pedestrians to get around safely. And we want, um, children to be able to walk independently. We want older and, um, disabled pedestrians to be able to walk around independently as well. So I just think I'll just leave it there and if you've got any questions, um, please fire away.
Thank you very much for your comments and submission, Ellen. We have a question from councillor Trillin.
Kia ora, thank you, Ellen. Um, I said a question, I was wondering if you could elaborate a little bit more on the comments and the submission around shared paths. Um, and I'm just looking under the, the section you have on part four, traffic at 18, around how we support the creation of shared paths and cycle paths by resolution of council. But then you go on to talk about how shared paths are not generally considered best practice in urban areas. And I was wondering if you could just elaborate on that a little bit more? And if they aren't considered best practice, what you would consider to be best practice?
Um, best, best practice is, is separate facilities for wheeled things and for pe- people, pedestrians. So what, what we're supporting there, and sorry, I didn't make it clear enough, is, is that there is a resolution process used to, to change. Um, quite often what we see is that footpaths are changed into shared paths. There's no change in the design, there's no change in anything about the footpath. It's just all of a sudden, um, it's expected that bikes or something can go on it. So shared paths, um, make most, make most pedestrians feel unsafe when you have, um, fast-moving vehicles zooming past and taking up quite a limited space. So, um, we support the process to use a resolution of the council to deliberately make that change. But we don't really support shared paths as a, as a good outcome for, um, people. And as far as I understand, cyclists don't like them either because it, it just, it builds in conflict with people. Um, and we want communities that are much better, um, to be in rather than creating conflict for people. So I hope that explains it.
All right, any other questions, councillors? Uh, if not, I'd just thank you again for your submission, Ellen.
Great.
Much appreciated, thanks.
Thank you.
Well done. Uh, adjourn the meeting. Um, now we, we can't start the other meeting until 11, can we? No, so.
We're now going to resume the meeting of Tipuna Corero. Thank you, councillor Morell. We're now resuming the meeting.
What was it, the name Morell?
Councillor. No. My Freudian slips don't extend that far. All right, we now have Conrad Edwards on the screen. Can you hear us, Conrad? No, you're still on mute.
Good point. I can hear you loud and clear.
Now we can hear you. Just so you know, you've got 10 minutes. A bell will ring at eight. So if you want to leave time for any questions, just remember that. So away you go, Conrad.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity. So just introduce myself, my name's Conrad Edwards, I've lived in the Bay for well over 30 years. I am a boat shed owner at the northern end of the beach, but only in the last few years. So most of the time I've been here, I've not been a boat shed owner. And I think if this question had been asked before I became boat shed owner, my answer would be exactly the same. This is my main issue is with the proposed restriction of cars on the beach. I made a few other points in my submission about cycling and so on, which I can take questions on. But I'd just like to talk about the cars on the beach. I guess from a selfish perspective, I could say that maybe it would be good if it was cars off the beach, because there'd be a nice empty beach for me to run on and kayak from and so forth. But then I see on a nice summer's day, so many people enjoying themselves on the beach. All the families, I haven't done a survey of car by car of who the families are, but I would imagine that a lot of them are from the poorer parts of this part of the world, and just going down having fun with the family. I mentioned I'm a kayaker, so if you go off the beach and look back, you'll find that on a good day, there are a lot of cars parked between where the old, no cars past this point sign used to be roughly halfway across along the beach. On the car side of that, there were tens, hundreds of cars, all enjoying themselves. If you look on the other side of the sign, there's virtually nobody. So to me, that demonstrates that those parties, if they couldn't drive down to the beach, wouldn't go down to the beach. You don't get people very much having family occasions down the beach unless they've got their car with them. So for that reason, I think it would be a significant reduction on the ability of local families to enjoy their time on the beach if cars were removed. And there's also the parking issue, so it's not as if those families who go down to the beach could park up and walk down anyway on those good days. All the car parking spaces, of which there are quite a few, have been used up. So I'm strongly against the ban of cars on Titahie Bay Beach. I'd also like to make another point. If there is a ban, you have proposed that there would be parking of cars with boat trailers permitted, but that would be in the very restricted area just part, sorry, I'm talking the north end of the beach, not the south end. At the north end of the beach, it would be in that very restricted area between the ramp and the signpost, which is tiny, or it would be in front of the boat sheds further north along the beach, which is presumably the only area that would then be available. However, there are two major problems with that. Firstly is that the high tide mark at Springs goes almost up to the concrete of the boat shed ramps. So there's virtually no physical beach in which you could park your car and your trailer, which a used big trailer is quite a long thing. So it's simply impractical unless you only go out on the water at neap tides, the low difference tides. And secondly, there's nowhere to park in that area apart from in front of the boat sheds, even if you accept high tide problems, which of course would block the boat sheds. So I think that proposal is just simply unworkable. So those are my two main concerns. I think it would be a major reduction in the ability of local families to have fun with the kids if cars were restricted from the beach. And the actual way that you're proposing to manage that is impractical with regard to the parking of boats, of cars with boat trailers. Happy to take any questions.
Oh, thank you very much, Conrad, for your input. Councillors, do you have any questions of Conrad? Councillor Sayuli.
Hi Conrad, it's Farfui here. Just a question regarding what are your suggestions regards? Because we've had a few other submitters talk about the misbehaviour or the bad behaviour on the beaches and so forth. What are your thoughts regarding that?
All right, well firstly, I don't think it's much of an issue. I'm down the beach a lot. I've always been down the beach a lot, I'm down the beach even more now that I have a shed there. There is people doing wheelies and that sort of stuff. I've never seen any real risk from that, it's a kind of nuisance, I guess, if you worry about that sort of thing. But to me, that is 100% an enforcement issue. It's not a ban, the 99% to avoid having to enforce the 1% is my view on that issue.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? There aren't any other questions, Conrad, so thank you very much for your submission.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. So do we have Robyn Smith now? Hi, Robyn, can you hear us? Can you hear me? Are you there, Robyn? You're on mute, I think. Yes. Have you unmute? No. Unfortunately, we can't hear you. Do you want to try and turn your volume up? I don't... You're going to try and call us? Yes. Yes. We still can't hear you. Oh. You want to try talking?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear, Robyn.
Oh, jolly good, I don't know what happened there. I had my audio on and my thing turned right on.
So you've got 10 minutes and a bell will ring at eight. So if you want us to ask any questions, just be aware of that.
I've been watching.
That's great, away you go.
Thank you. So I've been living in the Bay for quite a number of years. And I live up on Tarete Road on the hill, so I see what goes on when I'm not actually on the beach. I'd like to know if any of the councillors have gone to Titahie Bay Beach at various times to see actually what goes on down there. I'd like the council to pass a resolution prohibiting vehicles on Titahie Bay Beach mainly because of beach safety. Even before the latest sign from the regional council went up, it wasn't really safe to walk at times on Titahie Bay Beach at both ends of the beach. And now since that regional council sign went up and then went down, it's not safe anywhere. It's not possible for cars to actually drive to the top of the beach above mean high water without going below mean high water when there's cars parked in the way. So they do, and a lot of them are just giving everyone the finger anyway. So whilst most people drive very safely, there's a lot that don't, and it's not uncommon at all. It's extremely dangerous for children, elderly people with dogs in particular. I've seen videos and I've seen from my house people doing donuts around people, people doing beach slides around people, motorbikes driving along the beach at about 80 k's up on one wheel. It's just got extremely outrageous, more so lately. But every night prior to these signs going up, there would be people doing donuts every night on the beach. The surf club has had to section off the beach this week while they were having their children's activities. They had to line up canoes along the beach and put out cones to stop people driving down there. It's absolutely ridiculous. The other reason I'd like vehicles totally prohibited, or virtually totally prohibited, not all, is that if boats are allowed to continue to be launched from the beach, there will be no enforcement of whether the gate is closed or left open. There'll be no enforcement, no monitoring. There are three ramps on the rocks at the northern end of the beach. And there is one very large boat ramp down at only Poto that can be used. It's the same thing with boat shed owners. If they occupy the beach, there is far less room for people to use the beach. I don't see that they have any rights above anyone else to use the beach. The concrete in front of the boat sheds is actually on public land. It's not necessary because people don't actually use the boat sheds for boats. So it's not necessary to have that concrete there. And also if all the cars were banned on the beach, there'd be a lot more room for people to picnic on the beach safely. In saying that, there needs to be additional car parking put in by the council so that people who live further away than walking distance can drive to the beach. If boat shed owners need to access their boat sheds with equipment, then there's roads behind both of the boat sheds that they can use. And it's not necessary for them to drive on the beach at all. It's very rare that police can respond to complaints about driving on the beach because they don't have the resources. It's ridiculous to actually expect them to enforce this. There's far more worse crime out there that they need to deal with. And closing the beach would remove all the necessity for monitoring and enforcement because there wouldn't be any enforcement to enforce. There's no need. What else? Car parking for disabled people was one of the questions. If the beach was closed, there's a whole lot of area, and I've got on my submission some maps, showing potential areas for car parking. Down the south beach access road, there's enormous areas there that could be used for angle car parks, so it could increase quite considerably. I don't think the council needs to go to a massive amount of expenditure to make those into car parks. They don't have to be sealed, surely. They can just be consolidated gravels. It would actually stop a lot of the honing down there as well because there's a lot of cars that go down there and do donuts down that road at night as well. At the northern end of the beach, I understand that PCC purchased that big area of land up above the beach. There's surely some area there that could be incorporated into car parking as well for people that come further away. Also, there's no reason why people need to sit on the beach in their cars. There's a lot of litter, there's a lot of damage caused to the beach. There's damage caused to the phosphorus at times when it's exposed. And there's no respect for others. There's all sorts of nasty stuff other people have indicated, you know, vomiting, glass, you name it. It's quite disgusting. Also, for the bylaw to be enforced by the council, there needs to be a definition of a beach. So unless you actually define that properly, the bylaw will have no meaning whatsoever and can't be enforced. Is there anything else I've missed? I think that's about it. So if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Robyn. Councillors, do you have any questions? Yes, councillor Duncan has a question.
Thanks, Robyn. You were saying about how dangerous it is when motorbikes do wheelies down the beach up on one wheel, that sort of thing. How would you propose we actually stop the motorbikes getting onto the beach?
By completely shutting off the beach to vehicles. There's six beach accesses. Most of them between the northern end and the southern end are only pedestrian accesses, but they'd need a bollard just in the middle of them or a crossing gate that you can zigzag through to stop the vehicles there. That's a very small amount of money to do that. And you just shut and lock the gates at each end and do the same for pedestrians, making sure that wheelchairs can get through. You can have wheelchair access at the ends of each beach and parking is a priority, disabled parking is a priority at each end of the beach on the outside of the gate.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions, councillors? No? So there being no other questions, Robyn, I thank you very much for your submission.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have Graham. So we have Graham Ebbett from Titahie Bay Residents' Association. Welcome, Graham. I don't have to tell you about the ten minutes and questions, et cetera. So away you go. Ah, can you hear it? We can't hear you. You can't hear me? Unmute. Can't hear you?
Okay, am I in?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so we're all right and I don't need to tell you about the ten minutes. So away you go, Graham.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. I'm Graham Ebbett. I'm the Chair of Titahie Bay Residents' Association. And I'm speaking to our submission and it's number five one one. And it concentrates on a bylaw for motor vehicles on Titahie Bay Beach. The guts of our submission is pages thirteen sixty and thirteen sixty one in your files. And I'll take it as read. To give some background, I've been intimately involved in beach management since late nineteen eighties. I led the beachfront residents group. There had been a nineteen seventy one Porro Harbour bylaw, no motor vehicles on beaches unless launching or retrieving. But that was impractical with boat sheds. Our group sought a workable compromise for a car-free centre beach. In nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine, Porro City Council formed a working party of senior council officers. They commenced a major public consultation. Came up with the nineteen ninety Titahie Bay Beach Development Plan. And that was adopted by Porro City Council in February nineteen ninety, except for the deletion of recommendation three for a vehicle-free beach, except boat sheds and launching or retrieving. Nothing happened. Local mothers organised a petition, twelve hundred and sixty-five signatures, and it went to Porro City Council to try and get the nineteen ninety plan to proceed with that amendment removed. But that went nowhere. In nineteen ninety-one, the Resource Management Act process started and we formed Titahie Bay Residents' Association to go to the Environment Court for a car-free centre beach. And the Wellington Regional Council proposed coastal plan for Wellington. We thrashed out the details of mediation and eventually went to a hearing with Porro City Council opposing Wellington Regional Council and ourselves. The regional coastal plan was established in the year two thousand with the car-free centre beach. It cost us thirty-five thousand dollars. But that was rendered unenforceable in about two thousand and five when PCC and Wellington Regional Council conspired to adopt an unlawful new jurisdiction boundary a third of the way down the beach. We've now gone through a similar process for the Wellington Regional Council proposed natural resources plan. Greater Wellington Regional Council remains adamant, no driving or parking on beaches, and no exception for Titahie Bay boat sheds. But in mediation, we have agreed to a mapped definition of mean high water spring tide that allows Porro City Council to squeeze in boat shed parking. To squeeze in boat shed parking. It's cost us forty-five thousand dollars and we still owe eight thousand dollars. Porro City Council declined to be party to the proceedings. Your CEO has taken a wait-and-see approach over the last five years. The key items now are, Greater Wellington Regional Council proposed natural resources plan has elevated the fossilised forest to an area of national significance. The plan makes parking and driving on beaches a non-compliant activity. So resource consent would be required to access northend boat sheds if Bay Drive remains the access. Porro City Council is unlikely to get resource consent, and certainly not without an agreed management plan. The simple answer is to adopt Porro City Council's own nineteen ninety plan, close Bay Drive and replace it with angled parking, overlooking the beach. Replace beach access with a new entrance at Lamley Road for boat sheds and launching and retrieving boats. That's effectively a duplication of the layout of the south end. And please do it urgently before Christmas. Get rid of the current death trap with Bay Drive access and the mayhem with hoons. Thank you.
That's it, is it, Graham? Yep. Do we have any questions from councillors? If not, I'll thank you very much for your submission, Graham. And you know we're deliberating next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we've got no one else waiting? Oh, excellent. Okay. So it's three oh five. Madison, can you hear me? Just wait a second. Hello? Ah, Madison, can you? Can you hear us? Can you hear me? Ah, I think you're still on mute now.
There you go.
Ah, yes, we can hear. So welcome. You've got ten minutes for your submission and a bell will ring at eight minutes. If you want us to ask some questions, you'll know that you just should be. Don't use your whole ten minutes.
Okay.
So away you go.
Great. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. This isn't normally something that I would do, but having been a resident of Titahie Bay Beach and just sort of seeing how it's really changed for the worse on the beach there over the last couple of months, I feel really compelled to speak. So that's mainly what my submission was about. So I've been a regular user of the beach. I don't have a boat or a boat shed or anything like that. But, you know, like I said, I've lived here for twenty-seven years, so it's just been a really great place to live. And I really appreciate all the amenities that Titahie Bay and Poriru overall has for its residents. And I think that was evident over the last couple of lockdowns, just how many of us were you know, out there in the community and really valued you know, the safety of the beach and all the walking tracks and everything that we have. But since there's sort of started being a bit of contention around where you can park on the beach and, you know, the original sign rusted away and there was always one of those little orange triangular flags that, you know, sort of went from the top of the beach down to the pole there that stopped cars from going past. Since that went away, people have really just started to take their liberties with how far they can go on the beach. And I think one of the other earlier submitters mentioned, you know, since there was that article in the Post about people taking a stand against what they can or cannot do on the beach. You know, people are just really, quite frankly, taking the piss with how far they can go. You know, I don't know if it's a millennial thing or whatever, but I'm a millennial. I don't like to push the boundaries further than what's normal. Or, you know, taking a stand against what you're being told to do seems to be the flavour of the month right now. But people, you know, someone's going to get hurt there very soon. Myself and my dog were down there not too long ago. It was two o'clock in the afternoon. There was kids out. I don't know whether it was school holidays or teacher early day or something, but there was motorbikes, you know, driving around, racing up and down the beach. And I not hooked my dog up. This was before the dogs had to be on the leash during the day. She or I would have got run over by that motorbike. And I wouldn't know what to do then. And since then, I've got quite a good view of the beach. About two thirds of the beach. There's people doing donuts every single day, right in the way of where, you know, the surf club people are training and where people are just out for walks or schoolchildren. Or there's been a couple of instances where people have driven all the way down the beach, just used it as a roadway. So on Thursday or Friday, I was compelled to what I call Poriru City Council first and was instructed to contact the police. And so I did watch them catch someone who was doing donuts or burnouts or whatever you call them. But that was just one of three people who had accepted that on that day. And the policeman that I spoke to, they seemed to have no idea around what the rules are, around how far people can go on the beach. There was another car that was actually well past, so closer to the south end of the surf club. And, you know, they weren't aware of rules that that person shouldn't be that far down the beach. So, yeah, there needs to be something in place, I feel, to monitor it. And, yeah, just to have some sort of jurisdiction over it. Yeah, no one seems to be able to know what they can or cannot enforce. I do really feel for the people who have boats and the boat shed owners. They have to be able to access the beach, but I think it'd be a good idea you know, passes could be installed or, you know, some sort of key tag option for those guys. You know, I'm sure they pay enough in their rates or, you know, fees to have those facilities that they should still be able to gain access to the beach while providing safety for the other ratepayers of Titahie Bay and Poriru. It's for parking. I'm fully aware that there is lack of parking. I used to live right in the middle of Tarete Road, quite close to the surf club. And we had yellow lines outside our house restricting people parking over our driveway and people would still park over our driveway. So there definitely needs to be more options explored there or potentially just better signs to other car parking areas. You know, it's quite often you go to a beach, you know, up the coast, Kapiti Coast. You might be not in, you know, Waikato or Raritie or something like that, but there'll be, you know, a sign to beach access here, you know, and it might be like a random area which you wouldn't know you could actually access the beach from. So more sign posters like that for areas like the Offaly Lane Access could definitely help as well as, yeah, maybe, yeah, where else do we have a car park, I guess, you know, close to the shops or something like that? And then instruct people where to go to walk to the beach. For people with mobility issues, you know, I think we've got great facilities for those people at the south end on the Tarete Road, accessed by the park. You know, a person could be dropped off there and wheeled along that quite wide path that takes you around at least one third of the beach. And then there's a ramp actually down onto the beach. And you can actually sit on that wall if you want to. You know, that's more than, that's quite a bit of mobility, I think. Well, I can't speak for unable-bodied people, but, you know, we've definitely got options and we certainly would not be the only beach that has those problems. I'm sure we could outsource some sort of, yeah, project or, you know, go to other people, other councils or, you know, go to those other disability services to understand what it is that would help mobility issues. Access, people with mobility issues access our beach. So I think there are definitely options there. Something just needs to be done. And sort of where I just get annoyed is that the cost is constantly thrown back in our face as a rate payer. It's going to come at a cost to the rate payer. But, I mean, what else are we currently paying rates for if it's not for the services of our area and to ensure our safety? I really feel that we will soon see a fatality, an accident. Yeah, just with the current behaviour because it's the middle of the day, the tide goes out sort of from about two o'clock at the moment. And that's when everybody starts to roll up. And unfortunately, I don't feel like these people are necessarily Titahie Bay residents. I do feel like they come from other areas of Poriru because of the fact that they can drive straight onto the beach and get away with whatever they want to do. I think potentially there might need to be, well, we do close down the gates, like you said, nine PM, close access to the beach, but, you know, you see those security cars that monitor businesses throughout the night just for their safety, you know, drive past the warehouse or something like that, those security things. You know, maybe someone sits down there on the hours of five till gates closing just ensuring the safety of the beach, if it's not someone from the council. Or, yeah, if a police officer can do something like that. I'm not quite sure. I'm just throwing ideas here. But, yeah, long story short, I think something needs to be done because we will see something awful happen soon. Whether that's a motorbike knocking someone over, a car doing donuts losing control, switching to other cars, people, children, dogs, or, you know, just injuries from the amount of rubbish that they leave behind. You know, glass bottles, all sorts that just leave out in the open sand. It gets moved around. Kids will step on it. And, yeah, then there's also the whole other side of where, I guess, maybe the type of people that like to congregate down there. I know I haven't felt safe always and have been personally harassed by the type of people who, you know, sort of gang mentality, sort of sit in their groups and feel like they've got all the power. So, yeah, I think there just needs to be some sort of monitoring there so that people do feel safe.
Madison, Madison, your ten minutes is up. So do you want to make a final closing statement or are you fine?
Sorry, gosh, I didn't realise I rambled so long. No, not really. Just that I really hope that we can do something to ensure the safety of everyone who likes using the beach. Not just a few, because, yeah, I think everyone, especially Titahie Bay residents, feel, you know, really attached and really love our beach and we want to be able to continue to use it. And, sorry, I know I haven't felt safe to use it in the last few months.
Okay. Thank you, Madison. Your comments are noted. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Bye. So now I understand we've got Dan Albert. Are you there, Dan? Are you there, Dan?
Can you hear me now?
Ah, yes, we can hear you. Can't see you, but we can hear you.
You can't see me? Why can't you see me?
Not sure.
No reason why you can't see me, but you shouldn't see me, but...
Look, look, Dan, we can hear you at least, so if you want...
Let's go with that.
Let's go with that. And you've got ten minutes. A bell will ring at eight, so if you want any questions or you need to leave a bit of time for those. So away you go, Dan. Are you there? Ah.
Yeah, I am. I think what's going on here is I can still see...
But don't worry, just talk to us.
All right. Okay. Despite the perception that it's not worthwhile trying to talk to council because their mind is already made up. I've decided to write the submission and also talk to the submission. I think, I know you've read the submission. I'm told you will. If you haven't, you've got time to do that now. I don't really want to speak too much of the submission in a sense. So let's open up for questions and apply ourselves to the submission via the questions. Does it sound reasonable? Is it, does it sound reasonable?
Oh, you, you want us to ask questions now, do us...
Yeah, let's, let's ask questions. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read it, you read it.
No, no, um, but you, you know, I just thought you might want to summarise something, your key points. Do councillors have any questions? Because, you know, you can take it as read. Um, but do councillors have any questions of Dan? No, we don't have any questions, Dan, so if you want to proceed with, um, you know, summarising your key points...
Okay, the key points, uh, to start with is about the car parking. Uh, sorry, the, uh, the first question is, do you think that the parking zone, Porro City, uh, parking management plan provides suitable range of options to people visiting the city centre? I said, uh, I said no. Uh, it's, it's, it's a yes and no. At the moment, I think it is suitable, I think the proposal, um, is probably still suitable. Uh, I think that, um, going into metering, and I don't know, there's a lack of information here about the cost of going into metering. And the proposal is showing that the rationale is people always carry a dollar or two in their pockets, so it'd be two dollars, maybe that sort of stuff. There, there's a question here about the cost of implementing, A. B, the cost of going with something that seems not a smart system. And C, the whole idea of using one or two dollar coins. Now, coins, uh, something that most people don't carry, and coins are dirty. Um, coins, uh, especially in today's, uh, environment of, uh, pandem- pandemic, uh, asked from hand to hand, from people to people, coins don't wear masks. Um, so I, I suggest, I suggest a little bit more information on this when you come into, uh, into the public and ask for suggestions. Uh, we pay, uh, you use the money the best you can to implement what you think is important. Uh, we want to get a little bit more information about what we pay for and how much it's going to cost and what is the, what is the, um, um, what the transaction looks like. Um, how long will it take, what is the return on investment? I understand that there's an issue with, uh, parking. I don't feel there's an issue with parking, always find a park or work locally. Uh, but I'm not the only one that speaks to that. Um, about the safe or unsafe on, on the beach, do you feel safe? I feel safe on, on a boat shed. Um, I can understand that some people don't feel safe, that's fine. Um, I'm sure that, uh, there is some activity out there that isn't, that isn't safe. Um, where people don't feel safe is more or less around vehicle movement and some people misbehaving even without vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. Intimidation is something, i- is, is, is an individual thing. You can feel intimidated by a moving vehicle. Um, a little bit more control, uh, and perhaps, uh, looking at some alternative, uh, ways uh, of controlling in the area around the boat sheds, I don't really go anywhere else. Uh, by boat shed owners, um, uh, getting a little, something alternative to locking up and saying you can't do this and you can't do that. Now, one thing that got me, uh, riled up a little bit, um, uh... Uh, there, and I'm not quite sure where it is because I'm just looking at my submission apologies. Um, is, uh, the, the, uh, comment that, uh, loosely say that boat shed owners own property on, on a public land. Uh, uh, I find these comments, um, patronising, uh, very patronising. I don't know where this is coming from. We see it a lot, as a boat shed owner, I can tell you that. We see it a lot, uh, that, that, these are, these are, uh, an idea that, uh, that within council, and I'm talking about officers, there is a, um, a point where we are not, uh, uh, we are not favourable, to, to say the least. Uh, people don't, uh, uh, expect, accept us amongst officers. And I think that this questionnaire was put down that way. Now, when you talk about property, for the majority of people, property means property. Your property is your house. Um, uh, your watch, if you wear one, your cellphone, is your property. But when we're talking about boat shed, it, it immediately translates into, uh, physical property, which is, um, the boat shed is like a house. We don't own property, we, we have, um, we have a licence. With that comes several obligations. I think that putting an angle of that nature into a questionnaire that goes out to the public sets a seed, uh, that serves the people, uh, that produce that kind of angle. And I, I, I think that that should be rescinded. Um, uh, it's incorrect. Uh, we have a lease, we own a lease, not property. We have, we, we don't own the property. Uh, if a big wave comes and washes the way, we'd have an issue. Uh, regarding, uh, closing the beach, um, and I referred to, this is probably my last comment. Um, I referred to a river. Uh, the idea of locking the north end of the beach, the south end of the beach, whatever, which side of the beach, both the whole lot, stopping vehicles or public from coming to the beach. I think it's a back-to-front, uh, idea. I don't oppose it. Uh, I don't know what the reasons are, I, so I don't oppose it. But I think, I, I think it's coming a little bit too soon. I think that what should have been done was to, and, and it's been talked about for a long time, the, the idea of, uh, uh, of not allowing, uh, parked, uh, cars to go onto the beach. I think that the important thing here is to get adequate car parking first. So the horse in front of the car and not the car in front of the horse. I think that's, I think we've got a problem here. Um, the beach is a, is a, is an amenity. It's used by a lot of people some months of the year. Um, if we don't have car parks, uh, uh, on the beach, or off, off the beach for beach users, we preclude a lot of, uh, a lot for residents from using this, um, favourable amenity. Um, so first and first, let's look at where we can get car parking, how we're going to manage the car parking, um, and then, um, uh, possibly look at closing the beach for, uh, vehicle or, or for parking, public parking on the vehicles. Uh, obviously, as a boat shed owner, I, I, I need to get to my boat shed, I need to, uh, launch a boat and all that sort of stuff, so I should imagine that this is not going to happen. Uh, so that, I won't be banned from doing so.
Dan, sorry to interrupt, you've got about one minute left.
Questions?
All right?
Yeah, any questions?
Yeah. Are there any questions, councillor? No, we have no questions, Dan. I think we've read your report and have heard your submission. So, um, thank you very much for that.
Okay, sort out the car parks first, sort out the car park first. The beach was there for 80 years, 100 years, people have been driving it for 80, 70 years. Um, uh, it's no rush, let's sort out the car parks first and then, uh, what you need to do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, yep, there you go. Right, councillors, um, so I, uh, I thought I'd moved and seconded the report. I moved it and councillor, the, the mayor seconded it to put it on the table. We've now heard the submitters, we'll be having a detailed discussion the next TBK meeting. Um, so, uh, no room for discussion now, you've heard the submitters. No, there are no more submitters, as I understand, nobody's come in. Yeah, I've noted that, um, number 564, Gillian Warren, she's commented, uh, meant circulated to us as well, all right? Okay. Now, yeah, I'm just about to put the motion. All those in favour? Those against, carried, thank you very much. Uh, now I'd like to move that we go into public excluded. Uh, do I have a second, uh, please, yeah, councillor Trelawny? So let's move into...